Hi, it's Quail, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. The southeastern part of Vancouver Island, the Gulf Islands, and the Lower Fraser River are the traditional territories of the Coast Salish peoples. For thousands of years, the Coast Salish people have lived in, traveled, and fished the waterways of the Salish Sea. The Hulka Minam language is the language of this land. Hulka Minam traditionally, and to this day, unites the Snanas, the Sunemo, and the Sunimus peoples as one family on whose territories we stand today. We also give thanks to the ancestors, hereditary leaders, matriarchs, creatures, big and small, for looking after the rich resources and cultural teachings of this land. Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to look for any additions, deletions, or changes in order to our agenda. If you have any, please place them in the chat. All right, seeing none, I'll look for a motion to accept the agenda as presented. I got him moved by Mark, trustee Robinson, and seconded by trustee Morve. Thank you very much. Moving on to the approval of the minutes, that the minutes of the Strategic Directions Committee meeting held on February 12th, 2025, I Winston, be approved. And Tany would like to move those minutes, and I'll look for a seconder. And Tim is gonna second those for us tonight. Thank you, Tim. All right, so anyone opposed to the approval of the minutes, please say so in the chat. Oh darn, I think I missed that on the agenda, didn't I? Anyway, let's finish up the minutes. Anyone opposed to the minutes? No? Okay, I consider that passed. Do I need to go back and get a pass on the agenda? Let's do it anyway. I'd like to see any opposition to the agenda as presented. Awesome. Thank you very much, and my mistake. Now moving on to item seven, presentations. It does not appear that we have any tonight. And that would bring us to item eight, and eight point one is Don Belkum, our Assistant Superintendent, and he's gonna talk to us about the board goal of student and employee wellness. Welcome, Don.
Awesome. Thank you so much through the chair. If I get the right... Chair, can you just let me know if I'm sharing the right screen? It should say student and employee wellness.
Looks good.
Awesome. It's always good. I know I'm sharing a screen. It's nice to know that I'm sharing the right screen on that, so thank you so much. I'm happy to spend a little bit of time sharing with trustees kind of a midway checkpoint on our student and employee wellness. We report out on this goal through our employment or our enhancing student learning at the ESSL report in September, but this is kind of a check-in to share out what's happening across the district. There we go. So of the three board goals, one of them is around student and employee wellness, and there are two objectives around this goal. One is to increase the number of students who feel welcome, safe, and have a sense of belonging in their school. And we measure this progress through our student learning survey data. The other objective is to increase the number of employees who feel valued and/or engaged, and we'll be measuring this through our annual employee engagement survey, which this will be the first one. We did a survey last year just to gather information on the importance of employee wellness, and that is going to lead to an annual engagement survey. So this year we'll collect kind of a baseline data, and then as we go forward, we'll have some progress over time. So I want to talk a little bit about employee wellness first, and strategies and supports that we're putting in place to address this goal and objective. As we have shared with trustees before, on February 14th, we launched two products for all of our employees. So all of our roughly 2,300 employees have access to two products called Life Speak and Well Beats, and they're online resources. They're Canadian-made. They have a variety of supports in place for employees and their families to engage in, everything from fitness and nutrition to personal finance to supporting our own mental health and mindfulness as we go through. So that's one piece that we've launched, and we've had good uptake with that. Employees who are engaging with it seem to appreciate the opportunities there. Some employees are getting together with like-minded folks and engaging in some of the physical activities or recipes, so we're excited about that launch. The other side of supporting employee wellness is around our training for our supervisors, and those are our principals and vice principals and our managers throughout the system. So this is a product that we have available to us. It's a training leadership modules for addressing mental health, and it's in partnership with Homewood and Manu Life insurers, and it's a four-part training series for our leaders. The modules are online. They're about a 20-minute lesson with a little bit of a quiz at the end to ensure that folks have understood the modules. The first two modules we'll be sharing with our principals and vice principals next week, and so they're around mental health concerns in the workplace and managing mental health concerns in the workplace. And so our PVPs will be engaged in those first two modules in their March meeting. And then the last two modules, three and four, Supporting Employee Success and Organizational Strategies Supporting Mental Health, will be done in their June meeting. So that will give our principals and vice principals a little bit additional training and support in case some of their members of their staff come forward saying, hey, I'm engaging in some of these Well Beats and Life Speak activities, and I have some concerns around my wellness. This is just kind of a guide for our school leaders on how to address that. We're also going to be meeting with all of our managers outside of the learning services side of the organization, so that's through finance and human resources and information technology and facilities. And we'll be doing a similar approach with them once in April and then again in June, so that all of our managers and principals and vice principals will have that support. And then we'll meet with them and see how that level of support is working for them. And then next year, we'll build out a plan of additional training and support, should it be warranted. So that's where we're focused our attention, on employee wellness, and we're excited that we're being quite proactive on this, and we're hoping that it improves that sense of engagement and people feeling valued in the work that they do in such a busy and important organization. On the student side of wellness, there are lots of things that are in place, and this again gets reported out through our student satisfaction learning survey to the board through the ESSL. Just want to share some of the supports. There are many I'm gonna list. Some I will try to speak very briefly to, because I don't want to. I could spend a lot of time talking about these. But supports include everything from at the classroom level, broadly at the school level, district-wide supports, as well as our community partners, which include obviously our caregivers and our families, as well as outside agencies. So the first line of support for students is classroom teachers, our counselors, our inclusion support teachers, coaches, the extracurricular, and club sponsors. So the people that interact with our students for the significant portion of their day, and the number of different strategies and approaches that just classroom teachers alone put in place to ensure student wellness could be a two-hour presentation in and of itself. So that's the front line. Here's how we are supporting students. We have a district-wide multi-tiered support system that Kirsten Bunkie-Robinson has shared out before, so we have, and Carrie Steele have shared with you, around tier-one-level supports, tier-two, tier-three. So it's a district-wide approach that we support all of our staff to support students around their wellness. We have focused strategies at each of our schools to help support our priority population learners, our indigenous students, our students with diverse and disabilities, and our children and youth in care. And we do that through our red, yellow, green process. We're building a student wellness framework, so similar to our literacy framework and our numeracy framework that are being built. Sean Shawhe and others are working to put together a shell of a wellness framework, so that we have a district-wide consistent approach to ensuring student wellness. We have our behavior and digital threat assessment process, because we know that student wellness is often impacted through cyberbullying and social media and digital means that extend well beyond the school day into the evenings and weekends. So we have a process for supporting that. We have our LSST referral for schools to refer to the district level to access additional district supports, but also outside supports. We have our ICY program, which is running out of Dufferin, and that's been a big addition to the supports that we've been able to put in place for students accessing supports there. We have youth resiliency activities that run after school for students to engage in and stay active and healthy. We have our health hubs. We have our partnership at the Foundry that's coming on board, which is a great support for students. We have nonviolent crisis intervention training that we provide to staff who can work alongside students who often struggle with regulation and need a heightened level of training among the adults who work with them. We're part of the anti-racism provincial network. We're part of the SOJI provincial network. We have embraced Open Parachute and all of the gifts that that brings to our classroom teachers and supporting students. We have the prevention program that is taking root in some of our schools. We have our partnerships with Quamit Lelum and with MCFD, and we have our Safe Schools Board Committee that are engaged. So those are just some of the many ways that we wrap around students to ensure that we're addressing their holistic needs. Where does this show up at schools and how do they monitor it? This is where the data from the student learning survey comes into place. So here's an example. If you look up at the top, highlighted in yellow are the grade four and seven. So we have grade four, seven, 10, and 12 who participate in this. And then you can see the question that's highlighted there around belonging is a question that says, "Do you feel welcome at your school?" And feeling welcome, safe, and a sense of belonging are the metrics that we're monitoring through the learning survey. And this is an example I've circled in blue there, the difference between prior year for the positive responses for grade four. So example of grade four, this particular school had increased by about 13%. The students who had a positive response to that question at the grade four level, and about 12.5% at the grade seven level. And that allows the schools to reflect on what strategies are we putting in place to help students feel welcome at our school, and how are we doing year over year? So the good data is that the school level of schools can track that and see what interventions and supports they're putting in place and they're having. Here's an example of the secondary school, grade 10 and 12, and you can see the same question at the bottom there. "Do you feel welcome at your school?" And then one of the other questions we're tracking as a district is up top there. "At your school, how many adults do you feel care about you?" And the response is, "Two or more adults who care about me." And a gain of interest to the school is, "Are they making positive or negative progress towards the strategies and supports they're putting in place?" Why is student wellness such a driving and important piece for us as a district to monitor? Well, we participate in lots of ways of tracking data. One of the things we participate in is the McCreary Adolescent Health Survey, and it comes out every five years. So this is data from the most recent one in 2023. And when students responded to reasons why they would miss school in the past 30 days, you can see students who responded they missed one or two days. Down at the bottom, 18% indicated for their own mental health reasons. And further, 13% missed three or more days around their mental health. And we know that if students are not able to be at school because their mental health needs are not being met, we have no chance of meeting all of their needs. So it's a super important, critical piece for us. And so you can see a big goal of student and employee wellness that just has two objectives around increasing that sense of well-being, safety, and sense of belonging, and employee engagement, and feeling valued. Sounds like small objectives, but huge, huge task in my hands are raised, whether they're all full of rainbow colors or not, to all of our 2,300 employees and their families and community members who are supporting our work towards this goal. So I'm happy to answer any questions if there's any, and I'll stop sharing my screen so that others can pop on if necessary.
Well, thank you very much, Don. That was a great little introduction. I'll look for questions from anyone? There's a question from Chantel. Trustee Morve, go ahead.
Great. Thank you, Don, for that update and our progress for mental health. Student and employee wellness incredibly important, because as we saw, a lot are actually not coming to school specifically for their mental health, and that is, that's really disheartening. That's hard to hear. But I'm glad we know that information, because now we can address that information. So my question, though, is about the ICY teams, and I know it can be really hard to recruit for these types of roles. Have we been able to get that fully staffed up? Because it started what, not even a year ago, I think it was, right? I think we got the funding, but then it's like, you have to like build it out, right? So where are we at with that complement?
So we're in a partnership, and so there are eight employees of the total number. I see Kirsten popping on the screen so she can give you a really thorough answer if my superficial answer doesn't hit the mark. We're in a partnership, and so for the school district, our contribution to the teams are four registered clinical counselors and for family and peer support workers. And so we've hired that full complement. There's a team lead that kind of oversees all of the teams. And then Island Health has some positions that they're still in the process of filling to flesh out those teams. This is the first year, so I remember back in the summer, kind of going through the space at Dufferin as they were preparing those offices. So we are really quite new in this, and as a provincial program, very few districts, Kirsten will know the exact number, got started a year ahead of us. So there's a few districts in the province that are in year two of it. Most districts are in year one or coming on board later. So we're happy that we've been able to recruit and hire everybody for their school district employees, but we know that not all of those positions have been filled on that full team. And I don't know, Kirsten, if there's extra things or if I missed things?
You did great. No, largely, that represents our state of affairs. The integrated nature of ICY, because some of those positions do come from Island Health, and actually, even the child and youth mental health positions through MCFD are technically part of that larger ICY team as well. But because there's the sharing between ministries of those positions, right at this moment in time, there are two postings that have just closed for two mental health and substance use clinician positions that are Island Health positions. They will be joining the team as soon as they get filled and people get onboarded. So that's hopefully within a month or two, those will be in place. And we also have two program leads now that are both Island Health positions that are supporting our ICY team. So it's very exciting and lots of beautiful collaborations across those positions.
Thank you, Kirsten.
Thank you. Can I have a follow-up?
Absolutely.
Just a clarifying question. The family and peer support. So if you could kind of clarify those roles a little bit more, and if we were able to get the family support or the peer support ones in, that'd be great.
I'm happy to speak to that one too, a little bit through the chair. So there are, as part of the broader ICY team, there are two, 2.0 FTE. It can be sort of divvied up depending on different communities' needs. Here in Nanaimo, we have technically four half-time positions. They've been staffed by two full-time folks. Those positions are hired by Family Smart, which is sort of the umbrella organization provincially that's responsible for the hiring of those staff members. And so they are Family Smart employees. And so they are not housed out of our Dufferin location. Their work is entirely outreach-based, but we see lots of them, and they have quickly become super valuable team members. You may have seen some of the offerings that they have put out there already. They offer sometimes parent nights. They've had an increasing amount of success connecting with families through our Strong Start Centers. So they also can be available through referral processes. So students who are referred directly may be receiving, for example, clinical counseling directly, but they may also have a family peer support worker who's connected to their parent or caregiver. So it's really, there are a variety of ways that they are serving our kids and families. But those positions through Family Smart are parents with lived experience parenting children who are going through mental health challenges, and they're just really there to come alongside parents and caregivers in that journey and help them to access resources, just be a source of support for them, can certainly be helpful as advocates in their, as part of their care team.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for all that information.
Thank you, trustee Morve. I'm seeing trustee Harris with a quick question.
Thank you, board chair of this meeting, Tom. Thank you. I guess first of all, I think I'm really thankful for all the supports that are put out for our students and staff. Lord knows, we all need the supports this day and age with all the different things that are happening. Drugs and Trump, all this kind of stuff, right, that's going on that causes stress on everybody involved. So I really, it's music to my ears, as you know, when I used to be in leadership of schools, wellness was top of my list for everybody, and students and staff, right? So it's so important, preventing burnout and all these kind of different things, obviously, is so important to me as a trustee. But my question is, I know that we're gathering data and all that kind of stuff. Is that survey completed on a yearly basis, Don, or is it every other year, every three year, whatever? Just so we're keeping a good, you know, needing to know the data all the time in regards to whether we're going like this, up and down, that kind of thing. So just a quick question. Thanks, Don.
So the Ministry Student Learning Survey data is done every year. So we get data on students every year for that, and schools get school-level data, and we get district-level data as well. The McCreary Adolescent Health Survey that I mentioned is every five years. So we participate that in 2018, 2023, and then we'll do it again the next round. We also participate in what's called a Youth Development Index, and we have an EDI, an Early Development Index, as well. And those are annual ones that we report or get data on. And Youth Development Index has some similar questions around mental health and wellness and activity and nutrition, access to community services. So it's similar to the McCreary, and it's really good information that we get. And we get that at the district level, and so we meet around that, because it's stuff that we can track. As you said, it's important to know if our interventions are helping and to get some feedback from students, which we do through our Student Voice Circle, to say what are schools doing that's helping you around mental health and wellness? Because it's a very popular topic with the students, right? They have anxiety, and they feel stressed, and they feel pressures, and it's good to know what's working and what's not, so that we can share that. Because if one student says, hey, in our school, you know, this is what's really being supportive, we want to share that with all the schools so that other schools can try that.
Follow-up, Tom?
Absolutely.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Tom. Just, I guess, a little follow-up to that is like, because when I looked at your list of all the different supports for students in particular, it's a long list, you know what I mean? Like, you know, is it, I'm just wondering, you know, I guess we'd find out from year to year if we're spread too thin or those types of things, obviously, right? You know what I mean? So sometimes it's good to just focus and get the job done right, you know what I mean? So by having too much, I guess we'd be able to gauge it from year to year, whether it's too many things that was, you know, or not enough still, you know what I mean? So I'm just curious to see how this goes from year to year. So thanks again.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you, Tim. And I'm seeing trustee Pellegrin. Welcome.
Hi. So I was just wondering if the survey from the Ministry for the Students is set by the province, or do we do individual ones per district of what the questions are?
So the Ministry sets the questions. However, so we track through our ESSL. We've pulled out questions that the Ministry asks that we want to track, but schools can also request specific questions. So a school may say, hey, we want to know from our grade four students and our grade seven students how they feel about, and they're allowed to, I think they're allowed, might be five and maybe even be up to 10 questions that the schools can add to track.
Okay, that's great. I was at, do you mind if I have a really quick follow-up to just continue to talk, Tom? I was at Hammond Bay today for a visit, and it was really neat to hear the vice principal had just done a couple of these surveys with the students, and to hear the students, very thoughtful, kind of like little investigative journalists. Like, they were like, well, wait a minute. What do you think they mean by this question? Like, I had access to food, but I chose not to eat my breakfast. So what are they actually saying? Like, it was just so, like, really deep in thought and like really dissecting it from every angle, and I thought that was really cool. And it just made me wonder if it's extremely set. So I think that's important to be able to have a few custom questions for things that are going on for us. That's good to know. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate all the great questions, and I don't see anybody else in the chat, so I'm just gonna make my own kind of observation. I really appreciate this whole system approach, and you know, even Robin's letter today to staff had a tone of care throughout the whole thing. It said, "You're making me want to go back to the classroom, Don." It's quite a good effort. A couple of things that I'm happy about, I'm happy to hear that staff are finding a way to take this online learning into real-time experiences together. I know lately I've been really relying on getting together with people when it's possible for my own mental health. And then I think about the partnerships you've highlighted between the Foundry and the Quamit Lelum, the ICY teams coming in, our work with the nations, and realize that this is across-the-board society response. But we have such a big role. You know, we take charge of 16,000 kids every day, and we're the largest employer in the district. So we could have a serious impact on the mental health of not just our schools, but of the city of Nanaimo and the region. So thank you for spearheading these efforts and explaining them to us tonight.
Awesome. You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, following Don, we have Assistant Superintendent Laura Tate, and she is going to speak to us about the local school calendar. Welcome, Laura.
Thank you. Hello and good evening. It's nice to see all of you. So by way of an overarching summary, as per the School Act, and more specifically the calendar regulation, boards are required to submit a school calendar to the Ministry for review. Districts can now also submit calendars for up to three consecutive years at one time. And it's also required that districts, these calendars, go out for a 30-day public consultation. So the Ministry sets the minimum number of instructional hours, but it's up to the district to determine things like the beginning and end dates of the school year, length of the school days, the number of non-instructional days, the timetable. We're also responsible for submitting a school calendar for any distributed learning schools as they follow a little bit of a different calendar with different dates of operation. So for us, of course, that's Island Connected. And professional development dates are chosen by the, are recommended by the Joint Pro D Committee, which is a committee that's required through our teacher collective agreement. Better background there for you. So I'd like to bring to your attention two items this evening. The first is an amendment to the 2526 school calendar. So this calendar has already been set, and it's been approved by the board and shared with the Ministry. However, the School Act does permit districts to submit amendments to their school calendars if they choose, and any amended school calendar must be shared with the public within 30 days of that amendment, but it does not require additional public consultation. The Calendar Committee is proposing a change to the District Professional Development Day, currently set for Monday, February 9th, 2026, and the school-based day set for the following Tuesday, February 10th. So this year's District Pro D Day, which was on the 3rd of February, was partly canceled due to snow, and this is the second time this has happened in a number of years. So considering the extensive planning and investment involved, the overall disruption was fairly significant. So moving forward to help avoid any weather-related challenges, it's proposed that this date change to April 27th, 2026. So originally, February had the Monday, the 9th, was the District Pro D Day, and Tuesday, the 10th, was the school-based day. So the proposal is to move that district day off the Monday and to slide that school-based day that was on the following Tuesday onto the Monday. And these date changes have no impact on the minimum number of hours of instruction, nor do they impact the balanced semesters at secondary. And the second item for your consideration are the school calendars for the three-year period starting in 2026, '27, and go all the way to 28, '29. So the Calendar Committee received recommended dates for both the Pro D days and all the non-instructional days from the Joint Professional Development Committee. And for the placement of the spring and winter breaks and all the non-instructional days, the Calendar Committee takes into consideration a number of things, such as balancing the needs of families with the need for supportive Pro D structures. So meaning that there, you'll see that there's a combination of Pro D Days that are sort of back to back, creating long weekends for families. And there's also some single days. Well, you'll see some Pro D Days that are single days on their own. They take into consideration the placement of stat holidays. The committee looks at neighboring districts and if their calendars are available and if we we seek to align there. And of course, we have to balance instructional hours for between the two semesters at secondary level. So the three-year calendar, calendars that you have in your package today require, will require thirty-day public consultation. And I leave the attached recommended motions for your review.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Laura. So yeah, we have two motions in front of us to recommend to the Board or not. And so do I have someone like to, oh, I have a comment from Tanya Brzezobick. Do I need to get these on the floor before we can talk about them? Do we need to move the motion before I can talk about them? Or can I take general questions? Thank you, Mark. Would you like to move the first one?
Absolutely. The Strategic Directions Committee recommends that the Board of Education of School District Number Sixty-eight, and I'm a lady smith, approve the attached revised twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six local school calendar.
Wonderful, Mark. Do I have a second here for that? I have one from Trustee Morve. So it's on the floor and I'll go back to Tanya for comment.
Thank you, Chair. I was just gonna say I really like to change from the February to the April, not just because of the snow, but it I was always a li- little unsure how I felt about having it in February because that is for our seniors, for our secondary schools very early in their semester and they're just getting settled and getting started. I like the idea of giving them that time to to get in there and and start their new semester and not have a break until Family Day. Just really get get in the groove. I know that for myself, when I was a student, I I would have preferred that. And if memory serves me correctly, that Pro D Day, there was that, this Pro D Day was in April, a long, long time ago. And it worked really well. So I I'm fully in support of this.
Thank you, Tanya. And another procedural faux pas on my part, I should have allowed Trustee Robinson to motivate once he so eloquently moved that motion. Go ahead, Mark.
I I don't have much exciting to say, Tom. Thank you. Other other than the Calendar Committee met, it was the first time that I sat on that committee. It was eye-opening in regards to the the delicate balance of moving things around the calendar and having to accommodate different things and different thought levels of parents versus staff versus kids versus different holidays in different districts. There's quite a lot involved. And as they say, you can please everyone all the ti- or please everyone some of the time. Please some of the people all the time. You can't please all people all the time, but it's a great balance. It's it's really interesting work and I'm happy to support the motion.
Excellent. And looking to Trustee Morve for comment.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. To you, Laura, and and the folks who created this, these calendars, it cannot be easy at all. Just my own calendar is hard. I can't even imagine how to do this one. And three years, you know, ahead too. Not easy, not easy at all. If if I could just make a tiny little suggestion. It's just a tiny one. It's the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six calendar, the I I've got it printed out in color, but the blues are so close together that I mix up the two blues. And and if we can make the administrative day one just more purply, that would be amazing. Not a substantive change, so I think it's okay. But all the other ones are great because they're really pop, you know, you can really see kind of what that is. And I really appreciate that. There's time for questions.
Did you see the typo? I thought maybe I would do like a little contest to see if somebody could find a typo. I think it's in the twenty-eight, twenty-nine calendar. There might be a prize if you find.
Didn't see it. Nope. I didn't, I didn't read it that hard. Yeah. Can I ask a question? Or or a clarifying comment?
Yeah, I'm I'm just getting I'm just trying to take some advice in the chat from our Secretary Treasurer around accessed, access to questions for all of our participants tonight. And I'm wondering if Mark would like to come on and and advise us about how we should fix that. Sure. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Chair. Just just the the question about whether it gets moved before questions would happen. I know most people that do Robert's Rules oriented meetings, that would be the expectation. Typically, our practice is staff will do our reports, typically staff. Questions are asked of staff prior to the move of the motion. And just and the, I think the the rationale is that staff are not involved in debate. Also, our partners have an opportunity to ask some questions and offer some feedback prior to the the kind of mid-debate of the of the trustees when when the issue is before them. But note, Robert's Rules, we probably should align that in policy. So I can take that issue away, but just some advice. Yeah, and that's exactly where I was caught, Mark. So thank you for identifying that. I saw a motion and I thought we needed to move it before we could speak about it. I do apologize to staff for moving away from our traditions and maybe you could let us know in the chat if you wanted to participate and I will find a way. Back to you, Shontel.
Well, now that we've given staff more work.
Isn't that what we do?
Yeah. Sorry. It's if I were a family coming in, looking at these calendars, I would ask myself, what is the last day of school? Right? Because that's like a big question. I'm wondering if there's a way. And yeah, this is probably where the we're moving, we've moved the motion and we're debating it now, but this was actually should have been a question before this this debate started. But if we could make it just clear, like, this is the last day of school. That would be great. These are just small little things that make no real big difference to the hard work that all of you have already done on this. And I really, really appreciate everything you've done. So thank you.
I thank you. I think that's a great idea. Make it really bold and clear. We'd also talked about potentially including sort of semester changeover. We also are going to be producing another calendar. Right now I have it in table format, but a whole calendar for QP support staff, particularly ten months where we've named each of the days and how those are categorized for QP and paid, you know, unpaid or what have you. And so I think we'll be maybe creating a second version, like an internal calendar for some of those details as well.
That's great. Thank you. It's awesome.
Okay, well, thank you, Trustee Morve. I'm just checking to see that I haven't missed anybody. I don't think I have. So we can call the question on that motion. And anyone opposed to the motion as presented by Trustee Robinson? I'm not seeing any in the chat, so that motion is passed. Before we move to Tanya for the second motion, and now that we're not dealing with a motion, is there any discussion from staff that I may have cut off in my in my divergence from our normal practices? Just want to give a moment there. If anybody would like to discuss the calendar in a more open setting without the restrictions of a motion in front of us. Okay, all right. And know better, do better. That's my motto. All right. So Tanya, would you like to take us to the second motion?
Yes, happily. The Strategic Directions Committee recommend that the Board of Education of School District Number Sixty-eight, and I'm a lady smith, make the attached three-year draft local school calendars for twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-eight, twenty-nine available to the public for thirty days utilizing the consultation process as per Board Governance Section One, two point one seven, and a report back at the May Strategic Directions Committee meeting with recommendations.
And thank you, Tanya. I'll look for a second there on that. And that's from Tim. Thank you, Trustee Harris. And Tanya, to you to motivate.
Thank you. I, as Trustee Robinson said, I too know how complicated these conversations can be about organizing the calendar. It is a lot of work. I have the utmost respect for everybody who is involved in those conversations, be it staff, partner groups, everybody. It's a lot of work and we have a, I think a deadline as to when we have to get it in. So it's important that we get it out to consultation.
Thank you, Tanya. And do I see any other conversation on this point? Yeah, I will just add, I was also on the Calendar Committee for my my first placement here of the Board and hats off to their hard work. And I got the feeling it's kind of a thankless job because I don't think anyone's ever going to walk up to you and go, oh, wow, that was a great calendar you put out. Your your terms of success are basically hoping that it doesn't doesn't fail and that it serves all the purposes and and goes through those years quietly. So thank you very much for the hard work behind it. And with that, I will look for, I will call the question. And anyone opposed to the second motion that Tanya has presented tonight? Seeing none, it looks like the Calendar Committee can take our pat on the back and our thanks and and we'll see in three years. It's passed. All right, moving on to eight point three, we hear from our Executive Director, Planning and Operations Pete Sabo and Tracy Moat, our Transportation Manager. And our annual route review is our topic. Welcome. And thank you, Chair. It'll, I'm going to introduce this evening, if that's okay. Absolutely. So and and Tracy Moat is is here, who's doing all of the amazing work in trying to operate a system of increasing demand, high complexity, human resource challenges, mechanical failures in, you know, in a calm and compassionate fashion. So just want to express appreciation for the work of Tracy and her team. What I do, this evening, you'll see there's no recommended changes. And so our policy requires, you know, major restructures to be passed by the Board. We'll note that there is there is one change with respect to Rutherford that's already occurred. So this will or will already occur as a result of Board motion. And so this is aligning the bus that currently takes kids from the former Rutherford catchment to Frank Nay. What this will do is it'll take kids from the former Departure Bay catchment to Frank Nay as a result of the Rutherford opening. So a couple of important things I think I should note. One is just to be reminded that busing is not a requirement of the the School Act. So that is, it's a discretionary expenditure on part of the of the Board. And obviously, the Board is committed to getting students from schools. Couple of dynamics to note, and I think they've been captured very, very well in a very thorough report. But that I would would really point out on the final page, the the conclusions are important. And again, Tracy is here to respond to any questions. We have received support from the Ministry for additional infrastructure to transport students with diverse needs. And so I think that that's important to note. Of course, that's going to have a potential cost, but the increasing demand is there, getting getting those kids to school. We are looking at a mechanical apprentice to try to to plug the resource gap because we do have difficulty both attracting and then maintaining individuals in our works yard. And so we have the the wonderful benefit of having our own local staff doing the maintenance work. And so we have that quality control. But the problem is is we've increasingly been having to send our buses out for repair and our vehicles for repair just due to those human resource issues. Again, you've heard about the electrification issues of the technology still coming into its own. So we we've had some significant issues that we're working with the manufacturers to address. We are working on the A P to align with the new policy specifically. But again, no major changes to note that weren't already voted for by the Board in the except with that notable exception of the Rutherford shift and some expansion of diverse learner busing in the district. Tracy, I'm not sure you want to come on and or if you could come on and fill the gaps prior to answering and getting ready to answer any questions?
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Thank you. So I think you captured most of that very well, Mark. Thank you for that. Save me saying all that. Yeah, I think that the one thing I want to mention too is just the adjustment in the roots that was supported by B C T. I think that's worth maybe noting as well. We could increase our service to Dover Bay and Seaview specifically for the students living on reserve out in the New Space. And that has proven to be very successful and really provided a much better service to the the kids going to those schools. Yeah, and like Mark said, our biggest, our biggest challenges really are in the electrification. You know, we're really working through new products that are causing, you know, a lot of difficulties, both mechanically and with charging issues. And and they really, they don't have a big range. And so we're really feeling the pressure with our charters, which is not really mentioned in here, other than, you know, it's our midday work that we have to do. We want to support the students in their their curricular programs and doing charters is is a big part of that. And and we're finding that we're limited by the amount of buses that we have and the spares that we have available when the the electric buses aren't. They don't have enough charge to do all of that work in the one day without coming back to to get charged. So so it's been, it's been a challenge for staff, really working through and you know, adjusting daily operations just to make everything work. So fortunately, I have a really great team and we've been very successful so far and we haven't had to cancel anything or but but it's a struggle. So, you know, we're just really looking at moving forward. What are the necessary steps that we need to make sure that we can maintain that?
And Tracy, interestingly, we are borrowing a bus currently at the very, very polite neighborly reasonable rates from S D sixty-nine. Is that true?
Well, we had one from sixty-nine. Now we have it from, sorry, Port Alberni. I can't think of what number they are. So we have one of theirs in our yard. We also have a leased bus. It's for a dollar a month. So it's not really leased. It's it's really borrowed from Dynamic Specialty Vehicles because we're having difficulty with some of their buses. And then we have a leased bus through the B C T. So we have a lot of variety of buses on our lot right now. Just like I say, to make make things happen. So yeah, but yes, they're lending at Port Alberni is lending us their bus for free. Very friendly.
Well, thank you very much, Tracy and Mark, for that report. And Tracy, I do want to specifically thank you for highlighting the impact of B C T on our on our ability to provide services to Indigenous students. For people at home, this is the agreement between the Province, the federal government and the First Nations to improve access education for Indigenous learners. So thank you for highlighting that, Tracy. It's really important to me and I'm sure the members of the Board. I have a question waiting from Trustee Pellegrin. Go ahead, Leanna.
Hi. Okay, I have two questions through the chair. So the first one is really basic, but it is, I'm just really curious, is this the winter range? Like, you know, I I've had an electric car for years and as soon as you're in the winter and you put the heat on, it goes way down. Is this well outside of just the winter range being significantly reduced? Like, this is beyond that?
Yeah, I mean, it's a little bit of both. I mean, in the winter, we we definitely get less range because when the heaters are on and stuff, we're we're using a lot more power. But we have a lot less charters to do. So they kind of balance out. Now, as we're getting into better weather and there's so many charters being requested, we, you know, we're still struggling with enough, like they're late. None of them give us over two hundred. We get maybe a hundred and eighty kilometers per full charge, which is not a lot, you know, where some of our routes are using a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty a day just to do the roads. So it doesn't really load yet. Sorry, I was gonna say one more thing, though. One, one of the strategic things that we're working on is getting money through C N C P to expand our infrastructure. Because we don't have the infrastructure to put on any fast chargers at this point either. And so in doing that, we're hoping that that will allow for some, you know, extra charging capability in the middle of the day so that we can still support the charters the way we want to.
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And then I just wanted to comment that it it looks like the ridership is up quite a bit. Like, I think I I read twenty-three percent. Is that in par with just our, it doesn't feel like the students have gone up enough for a ridership to go up. So what are, like, I don't know what the big changes are there, but that feels significant as it was looking so different in the years previous for now it to have such a huge jump in numbers. it was looking so different in the years previous for now it to have such a huge uh jump in numbers.
Yeah. Um, I mean, I think, you know, where most of the the busing is happening is in places like, you know, Extension and Cedar, um, Lady Smith. Um, and those are the areas that we're really seeing the increase in the ridership. Um, so overall, um, I think it was up, uh, sorry, I have these numbers. So, so the regular ridership is up a hundred and sixteen students. So that's how many kids have registered. Um, but we only get about half of those kids riding every day. That's that's pretty standard and always has been. Um, so the actual increase, that was a five percent increase in the number registered and three point four percent increase of the actual ones that are that are riding. So yeah, so for whatever reason, there are more kids riding the bus now. Uh, we have a big increase in our diverse abilities kids. Um, and so that one um was up by twenty-three students. And and that's door-to-door service. So, yeah, you know, there's only a certain amount that we can put on every bus. Um, so twenty-eight percent up in the actual ridership on that on that category.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It seems like everyone's getting on the bus. Uh, lots of comments here. So Jeff, going to you next.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I don't know what page it is in the agenda, but it's the second to last page of the report. Uh, the discussion about um the rise in student behavior issues on school buses. Um, and thinking about um another problem of lack of E A hours. I wonder, because I know some districts across the province do have this where uh the each bus has a um E A on there to deal with the behavior issues to allow the our professional drivers to focus on driving safely. So I just wanted to throw that out there as a as an option if we continue to see the rise in these behaviors. Thanks.
Um, and I think, Mark, did you, I saw you come on. Did you want to answer that one or do you want me to?
Oh, no, just.
There's a, yeah, okay, good. Um.
Appreciate the comment to be able to bring to our learning services team, for sure.
Yeah, and and we have had some discussions in our uh our committee that we formed. Um, there we certainly have talked about it. Um, you know, it's it's definitely a huge financial uh increase to the district to put uh E As on the bus. Um, so at this point, we, you know, we still haven't done that. Um, we talked about at least maybe doing one trial. So I'm working with Jackie Poole in on that. Um, we're just, you know, we just haven't finalized all our work yet in that regard. Um. You know, it's certainly something that uh could be helpful on the bus. Um, and at least, you know, for the E A to understand who's actually uh misbehaving on the bus or, you know, having unsafe actions on the bus. One, the driver, because the the driver's driving the bus and really can't see behind him uh without causing a safety concern with taking his eyes off the road. So it is very difficult for um for us to know really what's going on and the kids just get loud and it's really hard to determine what's really happening in the back of the bus. So another set of eyes would, of course, be be very helpful.
Yeah, anything, anything else, Jeff? Okay, good. Um, yeah, I have a kind of a, uh, well, I'll get in line. That's what I'll do. Uh, next, we're going to Lee Ann Lee.
Thanks, Tom. Uh, through, I just wanted to um touch back on what Tom was mentioning around the B C um T and the bus from to Seaview and Dover. Um, I really appreciate that ha- that having that addition because I think we were finding that we were losing students to District sixty-nine because they were busing. Um, so I really hope that we can see an increase of students from Reserve coming to Seaview and to Dover because um, I think that would be helpful for them. It's, you know, a much shorter commute, but also we have some fantastic um Indigenous educators at those schools. And I think that it would be very helpful for students of that um particular nation to see them um on a daily basis. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee Lee. Uh, Tanya, you have a question for us?
Thank you, and thank you, Tracy. And my apologies, my audio kicked out for a little while and I missed part of what you said about the charging. So is it that we just can't access more charging uh stations or that we just don't have a place to put them?
Uh, that we can't access. So um our actual electrical capacity through B C Hydro doesn't allow for any additional than what we've got right now. Um, and and if you go to a fast charger, then it's like taking two chargers and making them into one. Um, so in order to have individual chargers for our buses now to make sure they do get a full charge overnight, uh, we're just, we're at capacity. So we're looking for extending that. Yeah.
Okay, so there's not really anything the board can do to support you in solving that problem at this point?
I don't think so.
Getting it.
Yeah, I think I think that um Pete has done a lot of work with um putting in the requests um to the ministry. Um, and it, I think it looks promising that we're going to get some money there. We have also secured a lot of money through uh federal funding through, it's called Z E T F. And uh, so there's quite a bit of funding there. I think B C Hydro um is also uh got some money available. So I know that um Mary Zakarol, our energy manager is is looking into that as well. So the money is starting to come in line. Uh, so, but there's a lot of work to do.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Tanya. And uh, moving on to Tim for comment.
Um, thank you, Chair. Um, just wanted to thank Tracy um for the report. Um, reading over um, there's a lot of work that goes into, obviously, transportation for the district. Um, big money too as well, obviously, right? So um, my experience has been through uh has been with First Nations schools my whole career. And most of the people, most of the hundred and forty-four principals that I've talked to have, um, they do have E A support on on buses. Um, obviously for safety, but all the other thing that we sort of ran into was um graffiti and bullying is sort of what happened. Obviously, bullying sort of um is close to safety and it's connected, right? So but the other thing was um the graffiti issue. Uh, we had brand new buses and they were getting cut up and we ended up putting cameras on there even with E A supports and it was still difficult. So um, you could imagine if there's nobody on the buses, uh, that type of thing, right? So for me, I'm in, I'm in full support. I know it's a big job. I know it's big work for for such a large district like ours, but um you know, find ways, you know, like I agree with Tracy's comment around um start small, work with Jackie Poole and and see how that looks and have trials. But um, just speaking uh agreeing with Jeff, you know, finding ways to and being creative um to look for that supports that can go on the buses um on a, maybe on a needs basis for now. But uh, um, yeah, I just wanted to mention, uh, make that comment. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Tip. Uh, and trustee, uh, trustee Morve, yes.
Great, thank you. Um, yeah, I'm going to echo what everyone else said. Just tons of work. It's like the schedule, the the school calendars. Um, that's just such a complex system that we have. Getting our students to school is is really, really important um for they get them to get an education. And um I'm wondering, though, like, the thing that pops out at me, besides all the one of the the questions that all the other trustees had, which were some of my questions as well, is the maintenance of repairs um and the unexpected repairs. I mean, they're still co- covered under warranty and things like that, but like battery replacements, things like that. We know that they're going to have to be replaced at some point out of warranty. Um, and that's concerning. That is um that can be a really huge cost. The more buses you have, the more um we have uh repairs and things like that 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 need to come with that. And I I'm, I guess my question is really is is where does the funding come from that? Like, would that come from like the annual facilities grant? Would that come from capital or would it just come from a regular operational operations um funding? If you could.
So the the day-to-day repairs are going to come from operations funding that flows to to uh the the department, the bus, like transportation directly. Now, you know, facilities is a fairly big department. So if it's down in one or, you know, saving money in one area can reallocate to support. Um, you know, of course, the warranty issue we we have, I mean, that that's not an issue for us. What we do drive towards is, of course, every year applying for buses to make sure that we have kind of the newest ones. The moment they hit their kilometer date, we we go for, we go for the new ones. But ultimately, if our expenditures are significantly higher, and that's one of the problems, you know, our our people don't not only I'll say it, not not only better than uh people that don't work for us, uh, but they're also cheaper than people that don't work for us. So the the more human resource problems we have here, the more we're going to have to pay third-party contractors to fix it. Tracy, I don't know if you want to to comment further.
Yeah, I I I think part of the reason that this is in the report is just to draw a light to the fact that um, the E V bus is a new product. And they're still working out a lot of their bugs. And so a lot of these repairs that we're seeing, um, they are under warranty. So we've been, you know, okay so far, but you know, if they continue to have the same issues reoccurring, then you know, that's going to be on us eventually. Um. Yeah, and it's just, it's just, it's just so new. That's all, you know, I just, I guess that's all I really want to say about that. Yeah.
But you're forward-thinking, right? Prevention is is the best. And that is what really what we need um when looking at these, what could be significant costs in the future. Um, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you, trustee Morve. Yeah, I, you know, I I'm still in the honeymoon phase. My family and I got our first E V a couple of weekends ago. So I'm I'm trying to closing my ears to some of these long-term issues, but uh I I am glad that we're we're tackling them because I think it is, it is the future. Um, yeah, I want to ask a question that relates to Jeff's uh question about the E As on the buses. And this may be just my own ignorance, but would a student who in our schools and our classrooms normally receives a uh, you know, a high degree of support for their behavior needs? So does that, does that student go on the bus un-unaccompanied uh to and from school?
Uh, very often they do. Um, and so one of the things that we've actually done this year is started working a little closer with the schools on um, you know, having behavior plans for the bus. Um, because, yeah, they they work almost one-on-one with an E A at the school or um some behavior um teacher. And uh on the bus, they don't. So, you know, we have um some kids, they they actually have um harnesses that help to hold them in their seats, um, which can help. Um, and and the buses are small and we control the noise and and, you know, what's happening and where they're sitting on the bus. Uh, but they they often will ride without anyone. Um, there are some that actually ride with their their nurses. Um, but generally, they they do ride alone.
That's, uh, thank you for clarifying that for me. I I also think aside from our challenges to staff, that that would be a difficult way for a child that's struggling to start and end their day. Uh, thanks for that, Tracy. I see a question from Chantel Morve.
Thank you, Tom. It's actually a, you spawned another question for me in regards to that specific um detail. And I wonder, um, in in this is if you know or if you don't know, I, we might not know. Um, is ridership up uh for those with disabilities, the door-to-door aspects um up perhaps because of um the situations happening in buses? Like, are they the students who are having issues, having challenges, being in a bus um with so many students um moving over to uh the system that we have for for students with disabilities? If you know.
We're gonna have to, we'd have to get learning services folks who who run that aspect of it.
Oh, Carrie's here. She might know.
Oh, maybe we can get back to you on that one.
I I would say every year we have a couple of kiddos who, you know, try the the regular typical bus setting and it's overwhelming for them. And we we end up reaching out to transportation to make a change. Um, but I wouldn't say that's most of it. I think we just have more kids with complex needs in our system than we have historically. Um, and it's, yeah, there's just a lot going on out there right now, right? And we're trying to do our best to to break down barriers for families related to attendance and things. I think family circumstances are really complex, too. There are more parents um working more who have complex kids at home. And so, you know, the drive into school thing is really tricky for them every day. And and so, yeah, it's a combination of factors, I'd say.
Right, yeah. And it could be families deciding to go that route um right away and just saying, you know, this is, we know this is not going to work. So let's go this route. And thank you for giving that option because that really is equity of access for the family as well to have a dual income. Um, to be able to support their family and have their child go to school safely. I really appreciate that. Thank you very much for all the hard work. Thank you.
Thank you for your excellent questions, Chantel Morve. Uh, I have a comment in the chat from trustee Pellegrin that I want to share. Uh, she really wanted to highlight the innovative idea of an apprentice mechanic helper in this time of
We're losing you a little chair. Perhaps that seemed like the end of that item. Well, the chair is getting reconnected. Shall I move on? And if we need to come back, we can do that. And Mark, you're ready to jump in to be backup chair while the reset might be happening?
Absolutely. Uh, let's let's move on, Mark.
Okay, thank you so much, Tracy. Uh, excellent work. Uh, you can start writing your report for next year today because it'll take you that long and have a lovely evening.
Thank you so much. Nice to see everyone.
So the next item, and we have uh Justin Taylor, our assistant director of planning and operations uh with us to help out this evening. And so this is our annual facilities grant. So this is um the money that is annual. We've had it every year uh as far as my knowledge goes back, except for once, well before my time in Animo. So we're able to uh support a variety of programs of kind of generic improvements to schools with these funds. So you'll see there's a lot of maybe unexciting things that are listed. And we've given you a fairly extensive list uh on page forty-four uh and forty-five. And a couple of things to note is, one is we've, we have moved that that have real impact on on that have shifted in a couple, last couple of years. One is accessibility improvements. You'll see three percent of the budget, a hundred and six thousand. But in addition to that, there's, there is small uh kind of contingencies built into a lot of our programs to be able to access uh address uh accessibility. So that's a priority uh that's that's shifted in the last couple of years. Another one is you'll see nine percent for technology infrastructure improvements. That's the idea that the finishing of the kind of upgrading our our schools to be, you know, able to to run modern technology. The board's been funding that out of operating for many years, so an operating transfer to capital. But what we don't want to do is create a deficit in our operating budget to pay for something that's really uh kind of a in school improvement uh fund. And so you'll see that uh that that's there as an expenditure. So that should come down in in the last, in a in a few years. Um, with respect to the projects, so we have all kinds of schools asking for improvements in their in their in their facilities. Some things we obviously can't do much about, you know, uh, uh, the floor or roofing needs to get done, uh, just has to. Improvements to our uh H vac systems have to get done. So there's just a certain amount of of expenditures that that happen that way. Couple of highlights. One, uh, dead, very disappointed that we're spending two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars on the exterior walls at N D S S. So we are um throwing good money after bad. And that's just because it can't wait for funding for that facility. And so to do that. Second, again, disappointing to see on this list is Randerson Ridge's upgrade to the playing surface. Believe the plan is to do it ourselves after having tried to get someone external to do it and not being successful uh with that work. So very unfortunate and very uh regretful for how long that's taken. It's impacted that school a lot. Uh, another one that we're contemplating and uh, Justin, you're you're under pressure now. Uh, we are talking about how we can move our flooring program to be done in-house, the same way that we're trying to in-house a lot of our things. Our Q P folks are just as skilled and again, more skilled and often cheaper than an external uh contractor doing that work. And so hopefully, we can bring some of that in-house. Um, so that's really the the highlights. You'll see some uh, some funds for the bike uh cover structure at Pleasant Valley, but not a lot of the 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 nice-to-haves or more of the needs-to-haves on the A F G list is because we have such a a deficit in our maintenance. Last thing you'll note is we are putting in money to maintain Woodbank. Yes, we are not using it. S F N is using that facility. Um, however, it's important that the facility uh is maintained in an effective way. So, Justin, do you have any additional uh comments that you'd like to add before we get to questions?
Nope, you summed it up very well. Thanks, Mark.
Nope, you summed it up very well. Thanks, Mark.
So, yeah, emergency chair. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark and Justin. If anyone has any uh, comments or or questions, uh, uh, feel free to type in the chat below. If not, we can move on to the next item of the agenda. I, oh, I have a question from Chantel. Go ahead, Chantel.
Hi, um, thank you for this report. Um, it highlights some of the overall things happening in our district. I'm going to ask, uh, I guess a newbie question, and I'm not a newbie anymore, so forgive me on this one. The annual facilities grant, so we're 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 given money uh, funds for the specific um, improvements and um, or sorry, not for these specific improvements, though, right? Um, it's it's a pot of money that's given to us and we decide kind of where that all goes to, right?
Within a limited criteria, yes.
Okay, um, so do we have to to um, use up all the funds for those specific projects for that year? Um, I know I'm asking like a a lot of questions, but I'm I'm getting to my big one. Um, cheating, sorry.
Yes, we do. So if we get to the end of the year and we have unspent AFG, unless it's on a specific project, typically we would be required to give it back. To be clear, we've never given a penny back. So, in example, we have a local capital project that the board is funding, so uh, technology upgrades. In previous years, we could reallocate that to, we could attribute it to the annual facilities grant because it was for that purpose. And so we just saved money in our local capital. So, um, but yes, we do need to spend it in the year we get in.
Right. So all these projects are new projects, basically. That is my my big question. Thank you.
Or part two of projects, but yes.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Chantel. Do you have a follow up at all?
Uh, no, I I cheated already, so I'm not going to. Thank you.
Wonderful. Okay. If there's, if there's nobody else, I do have a quick question. Um, it's regarding the Anderson Ridge uh, playfield. I'm just curious. Do we have any steps to mitigate our losses in terms of uh, the expense and time that we've put already towards uh, fixing the field? Like, what, do we have a bit of a strategy in place?
Yes, we do, but not one that we would talk about in a public meeting.
Sure. Wonderful. Thanks. Thanks, Mark. Anybody else before we move on to the next item on the agenda? Chantel, did you have another? Okay.
No, no.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Chantel. Uh, Justin and Mark, thank you so much. We're going to, oh, I, we have our chair back.
Which I'm so sorry, people. Uh, and thank you so much, Mark. I guess that's why there's two of us.
Just the two of us.
Uh, where are we, my friend? Eight, five, eight, six?
We have just finished up the uh, capital and we are moving on to eight point five. So from eight point four, moving on to eight point five.
All right. Welcome, Mark Walsh. Thank you, Chair. So um, I'm representing the the subcommittee here in presenting a draft of the revised role of the chair and vice chair policy. Uh, so you'll see in the memo, sorry. And thank you so much, Justin, uh, for being on this evening. You are welcome to go and join your family for the rest of the evening. So uh, with respect, you'll see the motion that led to what we're looking at this evening. Uh, so the idea of the chair and vice chair and former chair and vice chair to look at the 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 chair and vice chair policy to see uh, what changes would be made. So you'll see a draft uh, with the recommended motion. And and so there's two aspects, of course, one is structural. We've changed the number, we've changed how it is in the policy template. We've merged areas. So it used to have kind of agenda and meeting as a separate roles for the chair, but we've merged those, changed the language slightly to be action oriented. Talked about um, just make clarifying kind of what the chair and the superintendent versus what the chair and the and the board uh, function looks like. Committing, of course, to information sharing, being very clear about what discretion might be there. An added uh, monitoring of superintendent's expenses, so that that's in there. Now substantively, the discussion was about trying to find a way to 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 commit the board to distributed leadership. Uh, and so it's it's in there and the idea that it's not just going to be the chair and the vice chair with everything. The chair will take time and or the vice chair, if appropriate, to delegate opportunities, which of course our chair and vice chair do now uh, for other trustees. Um, just generally recognize that the vice chair is the chair in the chair's absence. There's not really a difference between um, the the roles in that regard. Um, just clarity that it, that uh, chair assigns the committee and family of school assignments. Uh, just to, what does the chair do? That's one of the responsibilities. Uh, sets out the expectation to have positive relationships with external partners and with rights holders as well. Model leadership characteristics. It was there before the language is slightly changed. And then just a kind of it, it aligns with an item that's coming up and that's excuse me, the requirement to proactively address interpersonal conflict, uh, conflicts of interest and allegations of breach of the board's um, code of conduct. So um, not a ton that's different, but uh, this is what is recommended. And of course, I'm happy to answer any questions, but um, Naomi uh, and Greg and and Robin uh, were also working on this, so they might have some insights when the questions are asked.
Oh, thank you very much, Mark. And uh, based on your guidance earlier, I will not look to the motion yet, and I will look for conversation from the room regarding the great work done by Greg, Naomi and Robin on this new policy. I got a question from Chantel Morve.
Thank you, uh, Chair. Uh, through you, Chair, to the secretary, um, treasurer. Um, okay, so this is through a conversation I had, um, I think with with Mark Robinson. Um, we had talked about, uh, something about like succession, uh, if say, um, you know, when we talk about like the prime minister or whatever and and stuff like that, they're they're not available or something happens and emergency happens and they're not available. Like the 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 people who would um, be able to take over those roles, right? So far, we have the chair and the vice chair, but I wonder if what happens when neither of them are available? What happens if something were to happen and we have neither of them available? I I just line of succession.
So through you, Chair, I think what was, what was envisioned by the the addition of four point four. So in consultation with the vice chair practicing distributed leadership by allowing trustees opportunity to act in leadership and representational capacities. I think that the concept would be that they would be able to make that determination. And the policy statement is the board believes in distributed leadership to support effective governance and succession planning. And so I think you combine those two and there'd be an expectation that it's one, one day it's Tom that's going to be shoulder tapped, then it's going to be Mark, and then it's going to be you, and then it's going to be Ted, like that, like, that's what I, I think the discussion wa- was that, but it's not so prescriptive, I suppose.
Right, right. And yeah, I think that I I personally love it. I think it's absolutely fantastic, especially building capacity and and um, having people be able to uh, come into the role and have actually experience already, uh, some experience at least. Um, and I think that that's something that, you know, maybe we discuss with the chair. Something were to happen to either of you, what are, who are the people that you think could take over um, for this year or something like that? Um, and that could be a discussion, I think, with the board. And I appreciate that. I appreciate not being too prescriptive as well because um, it can be, and sometimes that's maybe not the best choice. Um, so I do appreciate this and I appreciate all the work on making it more modern, modernizing it um, and more bringing it into our time um, in our values and things like that. Not that it was bad before, it's just it needed some uplifting and some some dusting off, and I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Morve and trustee Robinson.
Thank you, trustee or Chair Rokeby. Um, I have a question, uh, just for the benefit of uh, the public and stakeholders. If we could highlight some of the uh, some of the changes that we've made. Whether with you through you, Mark, or through uh, Greg or Naomi? That'd be possible?
Sure, uh, through your chair. So uh, again, the the reason that we didn't do a track change is because we put it into the new template. So that that's why, like, we put the old policy in the agenda, we put the new policy in the agenda. But that's why I kind of outlined the the major changes in kind of descriptive form rather than track change, because I, it wouldn't, I'm not sure it would capture that. So, you know, when we're, when we're looking at oh, I'm going to have to get the policy out here. So when you look at the old policy, it's got section one and section two being meetings and the agenda. When you look at the new policy, it's now it just has a section that says organize and preside over meetings of the board. Including, and then the language hasn't changed all that much, uh, but that's uh, that is what is is there. And a couple of the sections, so we went from having uh, eight different statements under kind of meetings and agendas, just to having three different statements. You can almost see we've just merged sentences because they were the same thought. On ensure positive board superintendent relations. And so we went from chairperson to superintendent to an action. So they're required to ensure positive board superintendent relations. Um, and so the original one said, keep the superintendent and the board informed on all matters that might affect the district. That is a large statement, and I don't think anyone could possibly do that. So we've said keeping the board informed of matters raised by the superintendent that may impact the board. And then proactively informing the superintendent of matters that may impact administration raised by trustees or community members. So that's that that flow. Um, and then having regular contact with the superintendent to maintain a working knowledge of current issues and events and to share information with the board is appropriate. And so that's the idea that the superintendent might go, oh, hey, Chair, just so you know, might have an investigation, don't have anything else on that that, you know, at school X about this. The chair is not automatically going to necessarily inform the board, but that's the heads up that, oh, now I've got more information the board's going to need to know at the next meeting. Um, monitoring and proving the expenses of the super is completely new. Uh, and then the next section on speaking and acting is essentially the same, except for the appointment uh, structure. And then the modeling positive leadership. Again, ensuring trustees are treated equally, ensuring equal access to information, subject to the discretion that again, at times they might get something from the super that doesn't ma- automatically go to the the rest of the board. Uh, and then rights hold like developing and maintaining positive relationships. I believe that's completely new. And then the proactively addressed interpersonal conflict, conflicts and breaches of the code, that is also completely new. And the distributed leadership is also completely new.
That's great. Thanks, Mark. That gives us an idea of the, all the work that uh, Robin, Greg and yourself and Naomi have invested in staff. So thank you.
Thank you, uh, trustee Robinson. And uh, yeah, before I go to trustee Keller with the motion. Yeah, when I read this, I really, I I feel the values that have uh, really changed the board in the last couple of years. Um, I really, I appreciate that Greg and Naomi have brought their time, not just on this board, but also the previous board to inform what they think we can do to 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 best be working as a team. I absolutely feel the move towards distributed learning and I'm really grateful that they put it into policy. Uh, so if there's no other conversation, I will hand the floor to trustee Keller to move his motion.
Yes, my apologies.
Oh, God, I thought it froze again.
I was struggling with my technology. Sorry about that, Tom. Okay, so I'll read the motion. Um, the str- the strategic directions committee recommends that the Board of Education of School District Number Sixty-eight, NIMMO Ladysmith receive draft policy two one eight role of the chair and vice chair and circulate as a notice of motion for thirty days utilizing the consultation process as per board governance section one, two point seven, policy development.
Fantastic. And I see Naomi, trustee Bailey is ready to second it. Um, so any motivation, any motivating words, Greg?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind saying a couple of words in support of the motion. Um, so I guess just briefly uh, for the boards and communities information. Uh, we have had struck a subcommittee that consisted of uh, myself, uh, Chair um, Bailey and Robin, as well as Mark Walsh. And we reviewed this uh, the old policy in detail and just a few sort of uh, high level comments on the draft is one of, a few of the things that uh, I believe we really tried to do is to try to make the policy flow better, capture the values of the board as we kind of see them from a chair, vice chair um, role in in all, and also in how those positions work with the superintendent and the board. We tried to really capture the spirit, I guess, uh, of those two roles in relation um, to the board. So in any case, I'm happy to support the motion and bring this forward for your consideration. And if we get support, uh, hopefully we will be able to go to public consultation. Thank you.
And thank you, Greg. Any other comments before we go to the motion? Okay, uh, seeing none, I will call the question. Anyone opposed to the motion presented by Greg, please state in the chat now. Okay, seeing none, looks like the motion is passed and thank you, Greg, Naomi and Robin for your work. Um, moving on to eight point six, Mark Walsh.
Thank you, Chair. And uh, the next item is again, it's me representing the work of the policy committee, so uh, I get to, I get to be the one to flex and show three policies that the the committee, the committee through multiple um, iterations has has been working on. So if it's okay, what I'll do is I will go through each individual policy, seek a motion if the board's going to go that direction and then move on to the next one. The reason, of course, for seeing so many policies um, this evening is we've tried uh, purposely to put them together. So we're asking a lot of our public, but we're not doing it in dribs and drabs. We'd rather go, we've got a whole bunch of policy work that we think is is ready for your comment. Uh, all at once, rather than, you know, one this month, one next month, one the month after. Uh, and you know, we're getting that good, good uh, good progress through the the work plan. The first one is board recognition. And so as part of the policy framework, the idea was is that if we're going to have administrative procedures, we need policies that those administrative procedures flow from. And here's one of the ones that the the group and the board has supported this framework has determined that's needed. So it's not a bulky policy by any means, but it it is important. And so it does a couple of things. One, it creates an employee recognition section. So this is not um, replacing uh, an employee recognition AP partially in the retirement section. But what it's doing is it's saying, look, this employee recognition is really important to the board. Uh, and so superintendent, you need to have an administrative uh, procedure that addresses this. And I know how important this is to Robin uh, as well. We've talked about it a number of times since she's come on. And so the idea then is the board saying, yep, we're we're committed to employer recognition. We also want to respect that our unions and associations typically want to ensure that that recognition is done in a respectful and consistent uh, you know, fashion. And so we are likely basing it on uh, length of service. And I certainly know that the AP, when when Robin and I have been talking about it, the idea of involving trustees in that recognition is quite at the forefront. The second part of the employee recognition is uh, retirement. So we have an AP right now that talks about retirement. Uh, and so we're rather than just have an AP, we're just going to uh, well, we'll have, we may have an AP, but it just incorporates what currently exists uh, in into the policy as well as making sure that our trustees, we we know that our trustees have a role to play uh, in that. Second one is recognition of trustees. We have an administrative procedure. And so the idea is we have a staff driven document that is telling the trustees how they're going to recognize themselves. And so what we've done is we've taken quite a lengthy policy, and I'm sure lots of fine work went into it. Um, but had language that has a little bit of flexibility with respect to uh, re- uh, recognizing trustees. But also as an alignment, particularly for trustees that might be leaving, um, that it kind of aligns with that retirement. It could could be uh, continuing trustee, but at the same time, um, uh continuing trustee, but at the same time, um it it's now a policy. And then the final one is the third-party recognition. We don't have this anywhere, but we thought if we're doing this, we might as well have a place where where we're doing this. And so say someone comes up to a trustee and says, oh, you know, uh John Smith has really been really great for some service group and he's retiring and we really need to recognize him. And the, you know, trustee comes to the meeting and puts up their hand and says, hey, we want to do this. Well, this policy actually suggests that you don't do that. You'd go to the chair, the superintendent. To again, so there's consistency in in what we're we're looking at doing in recognition. So it's not just you know, not ra- random in that nature. So um that's the extent. Happy to answer any questions. And again, other committee members are here, but I'm getting hoping to stop, answer questions, have that motion moved if appropriate, and then go on to the next one.
Well, that's what we'll try to do then. Any questions or comments from Mark Walsh on the first uh on the first idea that we're dealing with? Uh yeah, I see Naomi. Welcome, Naomi.
Everybody was commenting or asking my questions in the other ones, so I didn't want to be repetitious. But I just want to say I really support this policy and I'm I'm really glad to see that um we're moving in a direction of um recognizing um our employees' lengths of service and contributions to our um district uh community. And um yeah, I'm just really, really grateful and really delighted to see this uh this motion on the table.
Thank you, Naomi. And trustee Morve.
Ditto to what Naomi said. Um I don't want to waste anyone's time by repeating what she so eloquently said. Um so I'll ask my question, and it's a curiosity about um the trustee recognition and the and I know in the AP it had specified specified terms. Um like at this date, we'll do it this, this date we'll do this kind of thing. Um so I I'd like to understand kind of like why that was removed. Um not that I want it in or out kind of thing, but I was just uh curious about that uh because I don't know doesn't really specify kind of when um a trustee, like what term length um they should be recognized. Um I was curious about that.
Sure. So through I can probably rec- uh represent the committee reasonably well. So the the first part was um just generally the prescriptive nature uh of it was, we thought maybe unnecessary. And then the other thing, of course, is when you've got the six or more completed terms like commemorative plaque, I what if they don't want it? What if that's not according with the board's kind of policies? Wha- what happens when, you know, you move and all that kind of thing? So it felt that kind of a more generic flexible model would work as long as we're preserving that everyone's kind of getting got treated equally in in that regard. The other one was please don't, I know we're on uh public uh tonight, but please don't tell anyone, though, that I, none of us know what the individual photo in bio in the trustee's album actually is. Uh and so we wanted to 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 reset that. Now, of course, trustees are have their picture taken. We do have the plaque that has who the trustees at the term were, but we're trying to track down what that album is, but we're it it's it's, you know, it's nice, but clearly not central to recognition if we don't maintain it, and we haven't as far as long as I've been here.
Right. Um it was actually about like the time, like like at two years, at five years, or something like that, or two terms, five terms. Yeah, one to two completed terms, three or more completed terms. It just didn't have anything in there about the terms. So I guess not that I need to be recognized for my term length, but I guess if I'm there for six or more completed terms, maybe I wouldn't mind having a recognition.
And I think, oh, sorry.
I see Robyn's popped up. Do we want to let Robyn answer?
Thank you very much. Uh I appreciate the uh conversation on this particular uh policy. Uh and through the uh through the chair, um trustee Morve, um I think one of the reasons that we wanted to leave it a bit open rather than so specific is that um of course, this is a visionary policy around what we want to have. And I think that APs are so much easier to change. And so part of it is to keep it modern, keep it current, and keep it relevant. And then I think in terms of that, it would be the determined by the board chair or the vice chair in terms of that recognition, that it would actually just be have the ability to move in the appropriate ways over time. So I think that was what the conversation was, and why it's not, it doesn't have the specificity that maybe it used to have is that we can move it to the AP. And then uh it can certainly um transition according to uh maybe the time and be more current.
Thank you for that. Yeah, it gives more agency to the board as well to to make that decision, be more flexible, you know?
Yeah.
I I'm sorry, I just, I I thought that there was not going to be an AP. I thought it was just going to be just a policy. Um so my apologies, I misunderstood that part of that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, and thank all three of you for your comments and the good conversation. Um and so I have a comment in the chat from Tanya that she wholeheartedly agrees with Naomi. And yes, I think it's a wonderful development. As as Sean called it, this is some of the low-hanging fruit and and what we can do to to uh to make our staff, oh, make our staff feel um appreciated. Um and Greg would like to move the motion. So go ahead, Greg.
Thank you, Chair. That the Strategic Directions Committee recommends that the Board of Education of School District Number Sixty-Eight, Naimo Lady Smith, receive the draft policy four oh three, Board Recognition, and circulate a notice of motion for thirty days utilizing the consultation process as per Board Governance Section One, Two Point Seven, Policy Development.
Thank you. And I'll look for a seconder on Greg's motion. And that's from Leanna. Thank you, Leanna. And uh any more conversation on the motion before I move to the question? Go ahead, Greg.
Yeah, if may. Uh so just to motivate this, uh be be speaking in favor of this motion. I think this uh the Policy Committee and staff for their support in doing this work. And I think it's important for us in law and is in line with our strategic plan to support uh employee wellness. And this is a a much-needed update to sort of an outdated AP uh that I think is important for us to uh recognize the good work and and length of service of our staff. So thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And Tanya for comment.
Thank you. I was just going to say, I mean, I I'm going to just add a little bit of context to the uh why I support this and why I supported the change to not have the number of terms in there. Uh a perfect, an an excellent trustee could only do two or three terms and and then have a health crisis. That means they can't run again. Like, we had one a number of years ago who, I think I recall, wanted to run again. The doctor said, no, you you if you run it, you don't, you can't take your health needs you to focus on your health, and you just don't have it in you. So there was an excellent trustee who didn't get that recognition they would have necessarily got for their fourth or fifth term through no fault of their own kind of thing, you know? And so I ju- I just think you, we we talked about how years of service was fairly arbitrary compared to looking at the whole picture of the person's contribution. So I just wanted to put that out there. So and and that's why I support the change.
Thank you very much, Tanya. And I don't see anybody else in the chat looking to jump in, so I will call the question. And anyone opposed to the motion as presented by trustee Keller, please stay so in state so in the chat now. And seeing none, I will say that's passed. And now we're moving on to the second item, uh Mark Walsh.
Great. Thank you, Chair. So the second item uh is another policy um that is being created to ensure their alignment with existing APs. So there's APs that exist. Um you know, some of that was clearly board policy at some point. Uh but now the idea of moving school catchment student enrollment to be board-driven, and then we have APs that that uh drive from there. To be clear, the School Act does address a lot of issues that the board, you know, couldn't really override if it wanted to. Um but eh the this uh captures a number of points. So uh first one I think is important is that does have a policy statement at the beginning that says that the board's essential preference uh is is neighborhood schools unless you're going to go to desire and access to a program of choice. And and so you know what that does is, of course, it puts the pressure on staff to make sure we've got capacity. Uh but it's also that statement that just, you know, picking a school for the sake of it is not the board's um uh goal, except for where you have a reason, French Immersion Academy, um et cetera. Some very uh specific uh definitions. Uh and then timelines as important, but a couple of things. One, uh catchment approved by the board is recommended by the superintendent, but then it gives that little guidance when the superintendent's reviewing catchments. They should maximize opportunities for active school travel. So incorporating board goals uh in in the guidance to the work that's going to be getting done. Uh maintain administrative procedure outlining when catchments will be reviewed consistent with the policy. And then a timeline to review catchments, which is consistent with currently existing APs. Um but the APs talk about board decision-making, and so this is putting board decision-making in policy. Uh again, just aligning with the uh School Act. Then it's talking about when someone's going to be enrolling in the school outside of catchments across boundary transfer as the example. Um you know, the superintendent is ultimately going to draft uh the the guidance on how that happens. But the board, again, is saying, look, superintendent, when you do draft, you know, using your discretion, we want you to contemplate environmental stewardship, SEATs, and Jedi. And so, you know, does that, does that AP mean if is it completely Lotto? So if I live at Extension and I want to go to Magur versus if I live like three blocks from Magur and a different catchment, you know, wha- is what kind of consideration? So that that would that would be reflected there. Um a ro- programs of choice. And so essentially, it'll provide, you know, the 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 superintendent will have an administrative procedure that addresses that. And then just saying like lottery is going to be the focus of how we are going to make a determination on access to those lot uh places, except for an exceptional circumstance. So a bit of discretion left over. Finally, uh Bill Forty, as we all know it, but specifically Section Seventy-Four Two of the School Act does allow for a First Nation, a land-based First Nation uh in your in the district to elect to have students residing on their reserve to essentially pick their catchment school. So it doesn't mean each individual person living on the reserve can pick a catchment. The nation declares this is the catchment school that we want, and then we do not have a choice. But it says by if the nation's going to make such an election, it has to happen by January to align with the board's earlier uh processes. So again, no previous policy being amended. Um and so happy to answer any questions and um yeah.
Thank you, Mark. Um anybody would like to comment or question mark on this issue? Yeah, I'm not seeing any. Oh, there we go. Uh trustee Lee. Oh, she'd like to move it. So uh just a second. I just wanted to mo- uh mention. I appreciate um the the new criteria for moving catchment. Um the active transportation is is one where we talk a lot about the amount of traffic around our schools and the challenges that that presents to staff and student safety. And and out of catchment move is almost always driven to school. And so to 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 add that to our list of uh at least points to talk to check in about is I I really appreciate that work. Um and trustee Lee would like to move the motion. Go ahead, trustee Lee.
Thanks, Tom. Uh the Strategic Directions Committee recommends that the Board of Education of School District Number Sixty-Eight, Naimo Lady Smith, receive the draft policy five oh five, School Catchment and School Enrollment, and circulate as a notice of motion for thirty days utilizing the consultation process as per Board Governance Section One, Two Point Seven, Policy Development.
Uh thank you, Leanne. And a seconder from Tim. Thank you, Tim. And it's on the floor for anybody's comments or questions. And just seeing if there's any more type, slow typing out there and seeing none. I'll call the question. Anyone opposed to the motion as presented by Leanne uh states so now in the chat. And that looks like it's passed to me. So thank you very much for your work. And the trilogy, the Mark Walsh trilogy comes to a stunning conclusion. Come along.
Uh so thank you, Chair. So the last time this committee met, this item was brought to the board um initially. And so I'm not going to go through it in as depth as the other ones, but what I want to focus on, so the idea was is that there was perhaps a few refinements that were needed prior to going out to the public for consultation. And so we anticipate this is an area of interest, both locally and perhaps even wider than locally. So we're going to get some comments and we want um and some probably some great ideas, but we want to make sure it was uh, you know, refined as as we could. So a couple of um changes the Policy Committee discussed, and thank you to to trustees for for providing some feedback. So making it very clear, so if we're starting with page sixty-two, which is the which is the draft motion. To be clear, when it goes out for consultation, if it does, um all of the underlines will be taken off. The underlines are there just to show the board the difference um from the initial draft that was provided last time. So first, uh board-level process, to be very clear, there's an AP that guides the kind of initial school base. You know, um director, assistant superintendent process that will be um aligned with this. So but this is when you get like when the matter is in front of the board. And then just to ensure that Section Eleven, the School Act, will be hyperlinked in case anyone wants to see the um the requirements of the act. Um and then objectives, important to say the board's committed to creating an environment grounded in the principles of justice, equity, diversity, inclusion, policy uh and say, that's for a conciliation framework. So that's going to influence the lens of the AP to make sure that tho- those concepts are at the forefront. Um a palette, just giving some more definitions uh that may be helpful uh that were suggested that might might have been missing. Uh and they're there, they're all underlined. Uh just a bit more clarity on um used to say procedural defect, I think, and now it's uh minor errors. Then uh under one point seven, examples of items that uh will not be typically decisions that significantly impact um the education, health, safety of a student. Uh just to be clear, policy decisions of the Board of Education are not subject to it. So making sure that that's not um an avenue for our anti-soji group as an example be uh because that's not what the appeal process is for. It's for individual students, not for policy decisions. Similarly, it's not for choice of resources. So if we have a book in a library or something like that, there's no appeal process um for that, just to make that very clear to individuals. Um just again, to highlight that that the procedural requirements and so on, the appeals procedure should be followed. But it's minor errors are not going to defeat someone being able to come before the board to represent their interests. Um so the with that, I'm happy to answer any questions uh about the draft policy as stated, but we did go over it in relative depth last time. The recommended motion, what that does is it would push if the board, if this group supports it, then it went to the board. The board would read the bylaw two times over. And then it would give notice to the public that third reading is intended like, you know, thirty days from now, a minimum. The the bylaw would be read and put into action theoretically, depending on the comments of the community. So the intent is, and I imagine we're going to get some some uh great feedback. The feedback will come to the Policies uh Committee uh with a report, review, potential changes, report to the board. And of course, if there's enough um feedback, the board's going to be also informed of what the feedback from our community was as well.
Okay, thank you, Mark Walsh. And I see a question from Chantal Morve.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark, for for the updates. I really appreciate that. There's some really great um added things. They're small, but they're mighty. Um especially when we consider that this is um a bylaw that uh can be very uh can create a lot of tension and stress um within our community. It's it's a hard one because families are coming uh to the board to appeal a decision or a non-decision. Um and that automatically creates sort of an adversarial position. It's it's it can be hard. It can be really hard. So making this more clear and more understandable for us uh for the community, for staff, everybody, I think, um really goes a long way to easing um some of that. For the community, for staff, everybody, I think really goes a long way to easing some of that. When, when they come ahead. My question, though, is about the board standard of review. And this is one I'm still trying to wrap my head around, even from like the very first time I understood this and. If you could explain a bit further what that means, because. I'm seeing it in a bit of a different light, and I I'm wondering if you could sort of clarify. How that would work in the context of the board listening to an appeal.
Absolutely, thank you, and so. The the standard review, and I know like the the committee debated, my god, this is legalistic, but it it is. It is probably the most legalistic language in the entire school act with respect to the board. So what section eleven does is it puts the board in the position to making a determination on a decision. That obviously significantly impacts the education, health or safety of a student in our district. And so, when this, so, so what happens is, is the parent is going to appeal, and so Shanta, I know you all know all this, I'm just for the public's sake. So what happens is, is the parent, typically the parent, it could be the student, but it's typically the parent, is going to appeal. And that gets heard by the principal, and then it gets, you know, they meet with the director, then they meet with the the associate superintendent. And then, they're still not satisfied with that outcome. And so, let's give the example that we said that. Student X is, well, the suspension example is ac- is actually a great one. So, and I don't, I don't mean an exclusion, I mean a suspension, so you can appeal a suspension, so I get suspended for. Mining coal on the property. Yes, because the suspension is a significant impact, like it's just deemed to be significant. So then what happens is, I appeal and they say, no, 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 no. And it gets to the board, and then what happens is, is the board is going to be asked. Not, if if the standard of review that's being suggested or recommended to be adopted in this process. The board is not being asked whether the decision of staff was correct. As in the one you as an individual would have made. It's being asked whether the decision of staff was one that isn't a range of reasonable outcomes. Right, so, yeah, digging up coal on our property has cost us some harm, but we could have used restorative justice. So I don't like what you did, you're wrong, we're gonna put it back. So that's the correctness standard, but this, the other way would be. Okay, well, you know, I wouldn't have gone that direction myself, that feels a little bit more than is necessary. But based on previous practice, based off, you know. The reins of consequences for that circumstance, we think that it is within the range of reasonableness. Therefore, we're not gonna overturn it merely because we wouldn't have made the same decision in the circumstance. That's the, that's the distinction, and why it is so important in in my my view. Is that when we're talking about an educational program. And we want to make sure the board is able to hear things, cause sometimes the board's gonna say no, but it's still impacting. Just because an issue impacts someone's education in in a significant way. Doesn't mean the board's not gonna hear it, this might mean it doesn't overturn the decision as an example. But there's places where someone might come with such a complex, and it's gonna happen with inclusive education mostly. Such a complex set of circumstances that there is simply no way for nine trustees. Paid what you're paid and the time that you have and the time that staff has to dig into all of the information. As if you were some kind of tribunal, like a labor relations board or a human rights panel or something like that. It would just like to, so in order for you to determine correctness. Staff would have to come to you theoretically with hundreds of documents that is just not. The board has the ability to set its own standard or review in the circumstance. I'll say the other concern that I have, if it's correctness. Staff's gonna throw the kitchen sink at it, and it's not going to improve the relationship between. The parents and the staff. Like that, that's, that's a concern as well, and so if you need a thousand pages of documents to determine whether this. Decision of staff is correct or not, again, that's what you're gonna get, and it's, it doesn't serve the board well, in my opinion. Sorry for the long answer.
It it's a long but necessary answer, right? I think that it's really important that we all kind of understand and have a common understanding of of what this actually means. And I, I, I think I'm getting much more, I think I understand now better what you mean by that. And kind of where the backend, where it lies with staff and things like that, I just think that. So I wrote something out, and this is, this is what I wrote, I had to write it out because I was like, is this gonna be hard for me at at seven o'clock at night to to sort of give my. Proper answer here, and. Just a couple little things that kind of concern me in regards to that, is is it okay to speak to that? About the reasonableness part of it? I, I think I can, right? And that's the, because this is, it's funny because it's, we're supposed to be asking questions, we receive the answers, it's not like a full discussion here. And I don't wanna take up this time to do that, but, like, I feel like that it's. The responsibility is to review appeals in a meaningful way, ensuring the decisions follow due process are fair and equitable and are substantively just. So, to me, it's sort of like when focusing on the decision fell within the range of reasonable options. It still might allow decisions that are technically reasonable, but still unfair or harmful. And allow human rights violations and things like that, so that's kind of where I'm, I'm feeling a little bit of the rub. In that respect. When we come to the table, I I worry too that parents might not fully understand what that means either, and I. Worry about their capacity and their understanding of to be able to bring their voice forward. To show that it's unreasonable, and it it's a very hard thing because we're asking. Being asked to say like, that's an unreasonable thing that you decided for that student. The whole thing is very hard to to say that. So I'm kind of wondering kind of where that lies in there. Making sure that families understand kind of how they're going to come to the table and argue their point. Under the review, the standard of review, under reasonableness.
Sure, so, dear Chair, I don't think that parents are going to actually have to change their. Their arguments very, very much, I think it's the lens that the trustees are using when they're reviewing that. And so the idea of an unjust decision suggests that it's unreasonable. Right, so the the trust, that's, that's the, that's, if you're unjust and you're unfair. It's not likely going to be found to be reasonable, that's where the board would say, okay, we find this to be unreasonable in the circumstances. So the exact, so I'll give, I'll give a a more likely example that that we have. I don't like the educational program that you're providing to my student because it doesn't have the. The EA that's trained the way that I want them to, and they didn't get the teacher that I thought, and they don't have. You know, one to one all day long, or what, with some, something along that lines. You know, all things that may be, you know, good, good ideas. But ultimately, the educational program and the discretion of the board to to the district to be able to make a determination. Would suggest that, you know, as long as that's, you know, the reasonable, and so the board says, well, if it was me making a decision. An individual trustee making a decision, I would have assigned the individual with. I don't know, fill in the training that 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 individual parent was having. But generally, in the scheme of running a school, in the scheme of the. The human resources that that we have and the strategy that we did it, and the educational program that we created for the student. Yeah, I disagree, I would have, wouldn't have done it that way, but it's reasonable in the end. Where if it's like. Will you get no, maybe the difference is you get no EA time student because we don't think you need it, or we don't. Have it, but you do need it, as an example. And they come to the board, and our argument is only we don't have any money. And that's all of a sudden, well, we, you know, we could have done this, this and this, and and provided that student with a need that they clearly have. Then we probably get closer to unreasonable. I suppose tha- that would be, or a procedural defect that is so clear. You didn't properly consult with me, and that's clearly available to a parent as well.
Okay, thank you, I really appreciate that, for clarifying that, especially for the public too that are gonna be looking at this as well, so that they get that background.
And quoting me provincially in days.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Morve, and thanks for buying some time so I could get back from my most recent tech problem. Yeah, I I wanted to thank the policy committee for navigating the tight rope in between, making sure we have clear and open access. For parents and students, and as Mark kind of implied, making sure that our systems can't be. Manipulated by special interest groups to move us in an ideological position. And we're just here to serve families and students, so thank you for that. I have a request from trustee Robinson to move, so I think we'll turn to him now.
Thank you, Chair. Move that the Strategic Directions Committee recommends that the Board of Education of School District Number Sixty-eight and I'm a Lady Smith. Read the draft bylaw five oh two. Parents, student appeals for a first and second time, and then circulate a notice. Of third reading for thirty days utilizing the consultation process as per board governor, governance section. One, two point seven, policy development.
Thank you, Mark, I need a second there for Mark's move. I'll second it, there we go, oh, Tim got there, there we go, Tim, Tim will second that, sorry to make it complicated, Paula. Yeah, so if there's any more que- questions or comments, now's the time. And so seeing.
I'll just motivate it if I.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah. I I actually don't have much to add other than I hope Mark Walsh is correct that we do have some interest in this, and we get some. Some good input that can go back to the policy committee so we can. Move forward, it's it's important piece of policy, and I look forward to seeing what comes out of it, so thank you to all staff that. Put this together, and hopefully we get some good input, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, trustee Robinson, and now I'll call the questions since I don't see anybody else in the chat. If you're opposed to the motion as moved by trustee Robinson, please state so in the chat now. And I don't see anything, so that motion has passed, and moving on to number nine, correspondence referred from the regular board meeting. Do we have anything? Doesn't look like it. So then we'll move on to number ten, unfinished business, and Mark Walsh, a little bit of overtime.
Thank you, Chair, so this is just the trustee code of conduct and conflict resolution policy coming back from consultation. We didn't have any comments, however, I just wanted to allude to. One, two minor additions. That align with what you just saw in the chair and vice chair policy, that's two point one point two. It's just making it just a little bit more requirement, so the chair shall engage section two point two or two point three as appropriate. And then two point two is just saying, so in the event that the trustee does not acknowledge the breach or is unwilling to take remedial steps. The chair shall engage two point three point one, so essentially it's just creating requirements on the chair to continue along the process, just to make it clear.
Thank you, Mark, and I will look for any questions before I turn to a mover. And seeing none, Tanya, you're up.
Thank you, Chair, the Strategic Directions Committee recommends that the Board of Education of School District Number Sixty-eight and I'm a Lady Smith. Adopt revised policy two oh five, trustee code of conduct and conflict resolution.
Thank you very much, I have a second there for that, please. And that's Leanna seconding that, thank you very much, trustee Pellegrin, motivate us.
Motivate. Just to say that I think I really wanna tell, space, state, state how much I appreciate. The policy committee and staff's work on this, on this code of conduct, I think we put a, I know we put a lot of time. Into really digging deep into what a good qual- quality code of conduct should look like, and I also was appreciative of the. B C S T A document that they gave us to help guide us in our conversations. I think we've done really good work here, and I hope, and I'm happy to see this become our new code of conduct.
Yeah, thank you, Tan, yeah, I I agree, and I'll just add that it was really great to have Secretary Treasurer Walsh's legal background. When we were going through this, I think that made it a really. Easy co- easy conversation with effective results in the end here, so I'll also be supporting it. Anybody else? Seeing none, I'll call the question, anyone opposed to the motion as presented by Tanya, state so now in the chat. And seeing none, I consider that passed. Any new business? I don't think so, anything for information? And I guess at that moment, I will look for a motion to adjourn, I have one from Mark. And I'll need a second there. And there's one from Leanna Pellegrin, anyone opposed to adjourning, state so now in the chat. All right, have a great week, everybody, elbows up, elbows up, everyone, have a great week, we're adjourned.
Night, everybody.